Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, April 25th. Call to order at 6:31 PM. First item of business is discussion regarding counter response to COVID-19. Latest case counts look flat over the last two weeks. At five?
Five.
Correct. We didn't get the last seven days. We should get that maybe this evening. But the two weeks prior to that were five each week.
And then you included the flyer for vaccine clinics around the county for additional second booster or first booster for 12 and over?
Correct. So there's one date in Irving and then several other dates.
And the one in Irving is tomorrow from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Irving Senior Community Center?
Yeah.
Continuing through May 18th at other locations. Anything else on COVID-19? All good?
I'm all good.
No updates regarding traffic control in Irving Center, correct?
Just that we're submitting some more information to MassDOT in consideration of whether or not the bridge would hold by personal funding.
I don't know that everyone has, is even aware of that potential.
So the high level is that there is similar to the MassDOT process when they do a five-year capital plan. There are federal funds that come to the regional planning agencies. It's overseen by MassDOT, but the regional agency oversees it. There's some funding that had been programmed that is not going to be able to be used in the coming year. And so they have put out a request to all Franklin County towns, the towns within the region, some of it's outside of the county, that may have projects that are close to being shovel-ready, that could be ready to launch. And so I've put the project forward for consideration. It's a complex process, and so they've asked for more information to see whether or not they would determine that it is an eligible project. So I'm working on that right now.
Keep our fingers crossed. It's at least an exciting opportunity, potentially. And at least from our engineers, it sounds like they believe we are ready.
That we can meet the requirements in terms of readiness, so.
So we'll keep everyone posted as we hear. We've been, Brian's been going back and forth with them and seeing what, what we can do from there and what they need to make a decision. But I have a feeling they need to do something pretty quickly because they have to plan and allocate, so.
The next two weeks tomorrow, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's got to be done before the fiscal year's out to start in the next fiscal year, so.
Right. The, the, there's a primary individual, there's a team of individuals, but there was a primary individual that I need to meet with, and they were out of the office until this week. So we're submitting that information this week to see if this satisfies what they're looking for.
Excellent. So we'll keep everyone posted on that. Well, obviously, planning to go ahead with the full borrowing authority article, but offset it as any way we can, as usual. Next item of business, surplus, equipment request for the IT department, third read.
I have no concern.
No, I have no concerns with it.
Okay. The one of you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was reading something else. One second to get back there.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, now I can't find it. Bill, if you have it up, you'll be quicker than I will.
I happened to click my whole page off, so I'm trying to get back.
I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
That we declare the Handycam HDR, EX380, the Epson X7210 projector, and the tripod for the Handycam surplus, as shown on the surplus. Property disposition request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe the quester had identified and put them out for public.
General public, yeah.
Just like we've done with other stuff. Good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Speaking of, we had done that with some printers, I believe. Did we have any interest?
No.
It has been months.
Yes, we had asked for responses in the middle of March, I would want to say, because we advertised it online and we advertised it in the around town.
Okay.
But the date has come and gone. So if you're okay with it, we'll dispose of them.
I'm going, yeah, thinking at this point.
Yeah, okay. But we'll put these new items up.
Yep. I don't know if any surrounding towns would have any interest. If you want to put the word out, we could do that, too, with some of the small towns around. And there is some new toner. Might save that a little longer and put that out there. Maybe some other place can use that.
Yes. I know there was a laser jet that we surplused from the assessing office that had some new toner that we would make available.
Yep, yep, we should do that. Or even munacy bed, I think we thought maybe could do that for those because they're laser toned. Just to clean that up. Discussion regarding trash disposal agreement.
So there's another attachment in your packets, so I figured I would just talk through where we are. We had looked at comparison in a memorandum two weeks ago at your last meeting, and we did some more follow-up. And small print is always where you want to do a little more digging in. So my initial hope was that we could maybe work with Casella, and I think that's sort of where we ended our conversation two weeks ago, is that our hauling company was offering us a rate, I think it was $93.50 a ton, where we could dispose of our material and maybe at least do a contract that got us to June 30. When we look at it closer, and I know that, I think the three of you had a conversation about maybe there would be a relief because the distance between the current disposal site and the new site may garner savings to us, at least on the hauling contract side, and maybe some offsetting. What's further in the details on the disposal contract is that the material actually has to leave Holyoke and go somewhere else. And so there is a fuel surcharge formula that was in that clause that uses a price of $3.70 per gallon. So anything above $3.70 a gallon, trucking it to upstate New York would be a surcharge back to the town on top of that disposal fee. And so if you, and I have to give all the credit to our friends in Gill. They spent a little more time doing some hypotheticals, measuring distance and calculating. It equates to higher than what FNG, also known as USA, was offering at $97 a ton. And so I don't know how far into negotiations you want us to go at this time with that. I think after that reflection, Jan Amin came back, reviewed everything else. There's another, in one of the other contracts, there's another, CPI was included. There's some other small language. So the recommendation coming from the district, specifically from Jan Amin, is that we consider a short-term contract just to June 30, keep it going to where it has been going, which is now called FNG, who was CEP, that is at a rate of $97 a ton. That gets us through the next two months. And in the meantime, she is working on some final details, and she, I believe, will recommend to you all, as well as all the other Franklin County towns with transfer stations, that we take our material to Republic in Springfield. She's working on that contract. It's about four or five pages. It's a little more condensed as opposed to the CEP contract, which was like 11 or 12 pages of details. I also had some concerns in the CEP contract that was referring to acceptable material. And I would, I would probably be a little more understanding about what was presented if they weren't our hauling vendor. We have performance standards in our hauling contract that requires them to reject material at the curb if it is not satisfactory material. So then to turn that language back around on us as the contributing party, I felt like the two agreements had to talk, and I have not been able to have their legal team speak to me and talk about how their proposed contract would talk to us.
Okay.
That would lead me to suggest that if we really did want to do something where we had a holistic hauling and disposal contract, that we would do a full procurement. You would generate the contracts. It would meet your standards as opposed to having a hauling contract that meets your standards and a disposal contract that may be in conflict. So obviously, you don't have to make necessarily a decision tonight, but if you're comfortable with it, I do agree with Jan's recommendation. We could keep the material going to FNG. It doesn't change our hauling contract at all. It's at a rate of $97 a ton, which is not great. We do have the money and the budget to cover it, but it avoids those other cost escalators with the fuel surcharge.
So I'll jump in. I agree with the recommendation, Jan Amin's recommendation, that we follow that.
I don't have any, any reason to do anything different at this point and further review. Everyone caught that, you know? It gives us more time. That's just till the end of the fiscal year, right?
Yeah, she's recommending till June 30.
Yeah.
Gives us two more months. She thought it would be probably another two, three weeks, and they would be done with the negotiations and what, again, she believes will be her recommended contract with Republic. And then give her a chance to send out an explanation to what was negotiated to all the boards that would need to consider it, and then get those, those contracts in line. And if there is some type of change with your hauling vendor, have a little time to do that negotiation.
Which would be, will be in year three next year for fiscal '23?
We're going into year three of our hauling contract, correct?
And Republic is a change in destination, right?
Correct.
Okay. Are you expecting to have something from USA, or is that just kind of going, you know, ongoing offer to the towns that used to go to that location without a written agreement?
I think they're, they're understanding that we're all having to move pretty quickly after the bankruptcy decision. And so they're the ones who put forward their version of the contract, which is, again, that four-page document. They would like something formally committed, and they called this morning just to ask if, if that's what was coming. Our material from Friday did go to the location, and I let them know that I'd be meeting with the three of you tonight, and we would be discussing this. And so if the three of you are okay with it, I'd ask for authorization to sign an agreement through June 30 with them and take care of that first thing throughout morning. I think they would be open to a longer-term arrangement, if you all were open to that, too. But I think they also understand that every town that was going to CEP is now looking at all the options, and it's really the three major disposal sites that have put together a proposal for the towns to consider.
I agree with what you said. I have no concerns. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah.
So it's, uh, with Casella, you mean, for the short term?
It's USA.
For USA.
Well, is it?
FNG at this site.
FNG.
That's what I'm trying to get all the.
10% G as in.
Okay.
And G.
Yeah.
Okay, not N.
Yes, yes.
So you want a motion to do that, to enter into a contract for?
Just until June 30 of '22?
Okay, so I make a motion that we authorize Town of Irving to enter into a hauling contract with FNG out of.
Disposal, sorry.
FNG disposal.
Yep.
Where are they out of?
They're in Agawam.
Agawam, Mass. Effective is today, I mean, effectively, through June 30th, 2022, and authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to be a signatory on any contract.
Thank you. Just a friendly note to, that's a disposal contract, not a hauling contract. That was my comment, not, not the, yeah, the name. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. So obviously, more to come there in the next couple of meetings. Meeting minutes from January 25th, 2021.
Make a motion. We accept the meeting minutes of January 25th, 2021.
I'll second it.
Any?
I have no concerns. I, I just went through it.
Okay. Interesting read. Reflecting.
I, I read them. I wasn't at the meeting, so.
Right, no, that's fine.
I'm abstaining from those.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain.
One abstention.
Yep.
Meeting minutes from March 28th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve meeting minutes from March 28th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And meeting minutes from April 11th, 2022.
Make a motion. We accept the meeting minutes, Monday, April 11th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion there?
No concern.
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Discussion regarding the former graded school and library RFPs. And so this, this comes from some language around the process that we were reviewing as part of the IP mill RFP, and came across some language that's kind of vague. I guess vague isn't the right word, but the way it's worded, it can be interpreted differently. And so we, we did interpret it that way. And after seeing it and questioning it, we spoke with legal, Brian did, and we also spoke with the IG's office. IG?
IG.
IG, thank you. Inspector General's office. And just to confirm, before we went through and had to redo anything, I said, let's just make sure that that is the intent, is the way we did not interpret it. And in this case, it was. So I'll let you fill in the blanks from there, what were, what it was, as much as you want, or how, you know?
Absolutely.
And where, what we're going to do.
So the, the issue is, and you conducted a very long, longer-than-necessary process, and it was very public and transparent. With that being said, there is a requirement in the statute that says we will advertise for two consecutive weeks in a paper of general circulation. And the last one must not, must be at least eight days before the submission's opening. So we did advertise at the very beginning of the process. There should have been a second advertisement that ran that following week. And then this all would have been, we would have checked all the boxes. So everything else in your process was perfectly fine. Your review and your grading rubric and all that stuff was fine. But technically, because that second advertisement didn't happen in a paper of general circulation, that is our hangup. And so anyhow, they would require us to go back through the process again. So I think it is advisable to follow the IG's office and legal counsel's opinion and run, fail that, that process, as much as it pains me to advise that, and just run it one more time. But we can do a very structured timetable this time. You had carried this out for probably about five, six months in all. We can probably conduct this now that we've unearthed all the documents that came through the addenda process. You've made a decision about whether or not you're willing to consider the library as part of this procurement. So we can take all of those things that you considered through the addenda process, make them part of your initial RFP, issue it once, and make it do within the five-week period. In preparation for that, expecting that maybe you'd be in support of that, I've sort of scheduled everything to run. I can always stop it if you would like it to stop. But we could start effective this week and begin that process.
So I guess my question is, is, is the whole process just kind of tainted now because we're going to wind up with the same two people buying for the same position again?
It's possible.
And, and, and they've already gotten one bite at the apple. And so now we know, essentially, I mean, either one or the other gets another bite at the apple and changes their.
If I understand your question correctly, it's about the competitiveness of the applications into the proposals. I, I think that that is a fair concern. The reality is, the, the process is more concerned on being open and transparent and making sure that people were duly warned. And so the RFP information, the, the grading rubric was already public information. Now, the way you interpret it and you talked about it and thought about it in a public meeting could be influential. People would now, I guess, have the opportunity to go back and watch those videos and, and think about how you interpret the grading rubric. So maybe that's different this time. But it's not that that information didn't exist prior. You're just, your public deliberation about how you felt each proposal responded to that rubric. With that being said, the, the proposing parties, if they choose to respond a second time, and they may choose to, they may choose not to, I hope they both do, could update their proposals if they felt like there was something that they could change in their proposal to make it more advantageous in alignment with what they think they heard you talk about. So is that possible? It is. I don't know that the IG's office is as concerned with that part of the process, as long as we conduct a transparent process. It's possible also that you could get a completely new competitor to enter the process. They may not have been looking for property at the time, and now they may be in a different place. But I don't think you need to run the process any longer than the statutory required timeline.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not concerned with the, I don't have the same concern that Bill has, because I just think regardless if, if one or both of the contractors that submitted proposals last time, if they want to use that information and they know kind of what we're looking for, they want to give us a bid that matches what we're looking for, that's in the best interest of Irving anyways. So if one of the, you know, if they have an advantage because we had a clerical mistake on our end, but ultimately, we get proposals that, you know, benefit, both that benefit, and we have to do a little bit more deliberation about which one is the best one and go with that, I don't see that as a downfall. You know, sure, they get another crack at it, but ultimately, the end result is still going to be something that the Town of Irving will sign off on because it's beneficial for the town. So.
And Brian's communicated with the contractor that we had originally selected. This isn't a surprise, right, that this is what's going on. And obviously, they can choose to do as they wish, as, as you said, Brian, but, you know, they vindicated interest, right, and continued interest. And so I would generally expect to see, I would assume the same, or at least a very similar proposal. I don't know that it would change, but who knows? It might. So I guess I'm, maybe I'm being optimistic, which is a rarity for me, but that, I think the, the, you know, best, worst, however you want to look at it, is we only get one, because maybe the other says, I'm not going to do it again. I heard what the group had to say, I'm not looking to change it. And it's the same one. And so it's a short process to check the proper boxes, and we go.
Yep.
Now, nothing's materially changed. We're still good with it. We're moving forward just a month or two later.
Yeah.
The zoning changes that we haven't discussed yet, that may be on the ATM, may be then voted on, which affect this. So that could be all advantageous, probably. And it may change. So then the other end of the scale, I think, to what you said, and again, best or worst, whatever you want to think of it, we have the same or more proposals than we had before, and we have more to look at. I think at the very least, we should end up with what we had or better. I don't think it should be any, it should be unlikely that we have anything worse than what we already felt was going to be good.
Correct.
That's where I land, under the assumption that the originally selected party would still be in the mix. So to me, that's the, that's the lowest bar, hopefully, is what we've already seen. And anything from there would be upside. So I hope. Again, it's, yeah, the two consecutive, the two-week language is just not.
Yep.
Very, very good, but.
You know, you had mentioned about submittals. I, I would be surprised if the one that was ranked as advantageous, advantageous and not highly advantageous, was going to drastically modify their proposal to what we were discussing as highly advantageous for the town. I mean, I just, based on what they submitted, I don't see that something that falls in their realm of repertoire. Now, could we get other contractors that want a bid on it? Absolutely.
Yeah, others could look at it for sure and say, oh, they like this. I can do something in that.
Right.
General, you know, area. And maybe we see something even better than what we already saw. I don't know. You know, that's, that's the potential. But I guess the only thing we, only options, the way I see it, and Brian queued it up just in case we decide to go that way, the only options I saw was either we fail it and we stop, or we fail it and we go back on the shortest timeline possible, under the, you know, hope and preference that at least the originally selected bidder was in the mix again. And in that short window, they already know and have done the homework. So we're not, we're checking the box, does not giving plenty of time for someone to come new who hasn't. If they want to, great, but that isn't the goal, right?
Right.
And to, just to be clear, we're going to do the full process. To, to your point, it would be to meet all the statutory requirements. So we will do the, make sure this advertising is, is correct this time. Obviously, the central register, like we did before, requires a 30-day, so that gives us a one-month period. We will offer a site visit, like we did the last time, for anybody who's interested. We will issue an opportunity to ask questions, and we'll issue an add. And so it's a short process to check the proper boxes and we go.
Yep.
Nothing's materially changed. We're still good with it. We're moving forward just a month or two later.
Yeah.
The zoning changes that we haven't discussed yet, that may be on the ATM, maybe then voted on, which affect this. So that could be all advantageous probably, and it may change. So then the other end of the scale, I think, to what you said, and again, best or worst, whatever you want to think of it, we have the same or more proposals than we had before, and we have more to look at. I think at the very least, we should end up with what we had or better. I don't think it should be any, it should be unlikely that we have anything worse than what we already felt was going to be good.
Correct.
That's where I land. Under the assumption that the originally selected party would still be in the mix. So to me, that's the, that's the lowest bar, hopefully, is what we've already seen. And anything from there would be upside. So I hope. Again, it's. Yeah, the two consecutive, the two week language was just not.
Yep.
Very, very good, but.
You know, you had mentioned about submittals. I would be surprised if the one that was ranked as advantageous, advantageous and not highly advantageous was going to drastically modify their proposal to what we were discussing as highly advantageous for the town. I mean, I just, based on what they submitted, I don't see that something that falls in their realm of repertoire. Now, could we get other contractors that want to bid on it? Absolutely.
Yeah, others could look at it for sure and say, oh, they like this. I can do something in that.
Right.
General, you know, area. And maybe we see something even better than what we already saw. I don't know. You know, that's, that's the potential. I guess the only thing we, only options, the way I see it, and Brian queued it up just in case we decide to go that way, the only options I saw was either we fail it and we stop, or we fail it and we go back on the shortest timeline possible, under the, you know, hope and preference that at least the originally selected bidder was in the mix again. And in that short window, they already know and have done the homework. So we're not, we're checking the box does not giving plenty of time for someone to come new who hasn't. If they want to, great, but that isn't the goal, right?
Right. And to just be clear, we're going to do the full process. To, to your point, it would be to meet all the statutory requirements. So we will do the, make sure this advertising is correct this time. Obviously, the central register like we did before requires a 30 day. So that gives us a one month period. We will offer a site visit like we did the last time for anybody who's interested. We will issue an opportunity to ask questions and we'll issue an addenda if that's necessary. So we are not shortchanging the process. It's still the full process. We just won't be carrying this out for months like we did the past time. We're going to hold it to that five week period and get this hopefully back in front of the three of you in June.
It would have been nice to be.
I was reluctant as well.
It would have been nice to been in the 30 day, you know, waiting period right now and just talking about this, you know, getting ready to sign it and move on.
I agree.
You know.
Yeah, I, I, I pushed Brian and, and we, and others in legal to explore every avenue to say, you know, what is the level of risk and what is the level of, you know, issue with, with that language? Because I, I didn't feel like there was much value for anyone in going through this again.
Correct.
And it's just a cost. So I don't, I don't foresee a probably different outcome or a different result, but maybe there will be one at the end of the day. It's not what I want to be talking about doing for the next six, eight weeks either. So.
So is the proposed timeline and the reissuance of the RFP acceptable?
Yeah, it goes out.
It could go out Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
And that's effectively the minimum timeline to check all the boxes and do the things that need to be get done within reason.
It's actually going to give almost another five days, but yes, yes.
Okay, it's close to.
Yes.
You're looking for a, if, if we're in favor, a motion to.
Reissue the RFP.
To fail the prior one and reissue.
Yeah, I was going to say.
So we need to like retract our award or our.
We identified.
We didn't actually award anything.
So we're just going to fail it because it's not closed, so.
Correct.
Got it.
All right. So you want, you want that first?
Might as well.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we fail the RFP process for the former graded school and library RFP. Do we have a date on when that was issued or does it, is it necessary?
I don't think it's necessary.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And then I will also make a motion that we. What do you want, reissue? Reissue the RFP for the former graded school and library effective today. Do you want to, do you want any other timelines in there?
Let's leave the other deadlines out just in case you will choose to issue an addenda and you accept the deadline.
Okay. So we'll just leave it as an issued effective today.
Actually, can we make the effective date Wednesday?
To match the posting? All right. So effective, I'll amend that. So I'll make a motion that we issue the RFP for the former graded school and library effective Wednesday, April 27th, 2022.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. All right. With that, it is 7:01 PM. We will call the joint meeting with the finance committee to order.
It's almost like you planned it that way.
Almost. I actually thought we'd have a little gap. Before the, the graded school issue.
Yeah.
So.
And we don't, I have the warrant. I don't have the other one. Okay, yeah, just the reissue.
I'll be printing.
All right, we'll get a few documents.
Do you want us to, do you want us to forward it to you?
No.
Oh, oh, okay.
Hey, I didn't print in just a moment. Just a moment, we'll get all our stuff in order. Are you good with your cable? My computer decided to start updates, so I couldn't cancel in time.
And you say you know you're going to kill your battery doing it?
Well, it was about at half, and it's still been updating for the last 20 minutes. So I'm going to work on my phone or wing it from here. And yeah, if you don't mind, I'll, if you get low, just let me know.
No, no, I'm good.
I have no idea. No idea where my battery's at. It's a 23% updating for the third reboot now. So while we're getting that, I'm just going to pull it up on my phone as well. So bear with me, it was, my computer's updating, so I don't have the documents. I'm pulling them up on my phone as we speak. So FY '23 budget requests revenue and then the ATM warrant is our topics for tonight. We'll start with the FY '23 budget requests and revenue. If there's any changes we decide to make there, we'll, we'll change the ATM. So let's, let's start with that. And we have updated summary, raise and appropriate general fund free cash summary. This is after review of the overall budget inclusive of all the changes that we've discussed so far and incorporates some mathematical errors we found, which gave us more unspent balance at the bottom by a few hundred thousand. So even better position there, favorable fixes instead of unfavorable. Any questions or concerns or thoughts just generally on the overall summary?
Just checking one thing.
Gone over the whole thing, but perhaps somebody already has. Just without getting into particulars of each line, is there a bottom line, a percentage of increase or change or decrease from last year? Do you recall? Or if you haven't done that, we can figure it out easy enough. But it's just a question.
Well, that's in the detail book. I'm just scrolling.
Okay.
A lot. One of you has it handy, feel free. I think we have that in there, don't we, the year over year and the.
Give me one moment. I'll do it. It's in the financial overview section.
I think I went too far. There we go. There is group by group. I don't know if we have a total.
Is it approximately a 6% increase, yeah?
Okay.
If I'm reading this right.
That's the overall budget?
That looks right.
So one of the questions you all asked to have answered, I think, two budget cycles ago.
I'm sorry.
So every year that you all have been building your budget books with more detail, I remember there was a conversation at town meeting where that question had been answered. So I think the answer to that question became embedded about two years ago. So we just update that when we do the financial overviews?
Okay.
It's on page 16 in the Adobe document.
Yeah, on, on section one dash two?
Yep.
It's in the text, right, not in the.
Yeah.
Right.
Tight chart, yeah.
Yep.
So FY '22 was approximately 12, just about 12.6 million. And FY '23 proposed is 13.4, just over 13.4. So just.
Thank you.
About 850,000-ish increase.
Okay. Well, there's a lot going on.
The, and Brian, maybe you know off the top of your head, the FY '22 is inclusive of anything in a special we would have done that would have changed those balances, correct? So that's like today's at least, or as of the last STM total picture?
Should be all inclusive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Of course.
And there is a breakdown on the very next page, one dash three. There's a bar chart that shows the year to year comparison in each of the larger categories about how you expended money to try to get at where that difference is coming from.
Okay. That's what I was just looking at. And I mean, it's probably five places that are 100 plus up, right? So the capital improvements.
That service and wastewater wasn't a big.
Wastewater, yeah, that's about 150. Benefits is almost 100. Public safety is about 100. Those are some of the big ones, you know, amongst the, the rest.
You, you brought up capital. And just one of the numbers that I wanted to make sure we were doing, and I think I brought it up at one of the previous meetings, was looking back at the summary sheet for raise and appropriation and then the general free cash summary. Looking at what, what we're actually getting for revenue minus free cash and then what we're actually expending other than our capital improvements. So, you know, did that change? And it did actually work out in the benefit or in the positive where our revenue was approximately 12.4 million and our expenses were 12.3 roughly. So, you know, just wanted to make sure that we're not taking free cash and then putting that into an operating budget expense. And we're not. We're using it for what it's intended, capital projects, things that come up. Because I don't want to see us as a town get into a spot where we're trying to fund operating expenses out of one-time free cash revenues, which thankfully, we're not there.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
If you, it's not that you can't do those things, but you risk creating a structural deficit.
Correct.
In your overall budget process.
Yeah, there's, there's about an 80, $80,000 difference. So we're, we're in the, the positive on our operating that way.
Okay. Your explanations are fine. I asked a question. So then we do get to town meeting, someone does ask. It's good to be able to say, we got about five major places where these, these big expenditures, many of them are capital. And it's not just we're raising your taxes and trying to find more stuff to spend money on.
Right. I have to go back through the charts. It's just making me think. When we're having this conversation, 6% sounds large, right? And I was looking at those bar charts for the same reason to say, where are the big buckets? Because try and operate on two something, right, two or two and a half or less. A lot of that is capital. So I wonder if we broke out non-operating or non, non-capital expenses or non, you know, one times type stuff, what does that year over year look like? You know, that may be good to your point. Are we?
Yeah.
Are we able to continue operating under our normal tax increase annually without? Are we getting outside of that with our annual increases? Because the one-time things are, we're often funding out of free cash in other places and they're one-time and they're funded from a one-time source. That's, that's okay.
I, I think those are a couple of great numbers to have on hand. We're overall at 6%, but, but our operating budget to run the place, you know, when it's 6%. You know, you've got to add in these things like we're building bridges and engineering studies and things that, you know, we have to do.
Yep.
Right. But we hope to not have to do every year.
Yeah.
Got that right.
So any other questions or comments on the summary sheet or concerns? Okay.
I did have, sorry.
And then the general, you know, budget request, revenue document.
Did you want to change, I'm sorry, in the operating.
Capital, the school 23 operating and capital improvement budget document?
Yeah. There was a one question. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's not there. It's, it's. In the annual town meeting.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. I knew I made a notation, but it's for something else. I was getting confused about where I, where I put it.
Okay. Okay, moving into that document, the operating and capital.
Before you go there, can I just ask you all for feedback?
Yes, sir.
Because at the last meeting, the three of you asked me for something. And I want to make sure I met your, what your expectation was. So on one dash four?
Oh, that's what I was going to, that document from the summary sheet.
Oh, oh, I thought you were going to the ETM.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Moving from the summary, the financial summary sheet. Sorry, I'm a little, a little challenged over here technically. Moving from, moving from the financial overview summary to the proposed FY '23 operating and capital improvement budget document with all the charts and everything else.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions, comments, concerns on any of the data in there? I know there's a section that you've added and so some discussion around that on the grants and special revenues piece. Is that the one you were referring to?
To get feedback on.
I don't have all that up in front of me.
And to say, I have it if you guys want to gather around it. We didn't print it because it's 90 pages, but you all have it in your email.
Yep.
Could I just ask another number that I think would be good to have on hand? How much have we taken in in grants this year, just combined from all sources? If we've taken in X hundreds of thousands of dollars and people ask, you know, why do we have planners and administrators and stuff that we didn't used to have? Well, we didn't used to bring all of your own money back to you from Boston either. You take somebody to get that done.
Well, that, yeah, that's the section.
That's the section that we asked in a prior meeting to see if we could put together and start having, you know. And so that's what Brian was referring to initially.
And there's two different ways to look at this. And so the way I went to it sounds less exciting than what we normally talk about. Dollar for dollar, more accurate. So when you get to section, it's on page, it starts on one dash four, carries on to one dash five. Deb Marrow, town accountant, helped me out with the FY '20 and the FY '21 revenue and expenses attributed to grant. And it spans the whole town from school to public safety, through general government. And it actually shows the revenue that comes in, but some are grants that fund upfront. Some are reimbursements quarterly or at the end of the project. So the revenue stream can drastically change and the expenses, they don't always line up in a fiscal year. Sometimes they carry for multiple fiscal years. And so I was trying to give, I think this is important data, but it doesn't look as splashy as, here's 600,000 right up front for this new project. It may be the town has to expend $200,000 to get reimbursed $200,000 and then do the next phase. And that can span over a few fiscal years. So when you look at this section, it does say in FY '20, we brought in $405,000 in grant revenue. We expended 328. The next year, again, some of those carried to the next fiscal year. In FY '21, we brought in $612,000 in grant revenue. We expended 817. Again, some were finishing up last year, the previous year's grants, some were expending for the next year's grants. So I guess in terms of presentation, I don't want to confuse it for folks. So we can take the accounting approach and do this. Or I can explain grant awards and just say, we, you know, we received these large grant numbers. But what actually happens in terms of transactions is much more detailed. So I don't know what the best way to communicate it is.
I have a question on what you presented and then I'm very interested in discussion on, on what people think, what we think is the best presentation.
Right.
And maybe there's a couple of versions because.
Right.
The, the tabular accounting way, I get it. It's not splashy. Point isn't to be splashy, but it's also to make it very recognizable what we're doing and the amount of work and money that's coming in. Because it is big numbers. So I don't know that this by itself is enough, in my opinion. But back to my question, so you're showing, we'll start with FY '20. You're showing revenues, which is grant money that came in, in that fiscal year.
Correct.
And then in the FY '20 expenses, it's expenditures from grant revenues.
Right.
Regardless of the year they came in.
Could, right.
So, so the, the revenues is grant money awarded in that year only.
Right.
And then the expenses is spent from grant money regardless of when the grant money came in.
Correct.
Okay. Which could create huge swings either way. You could look very negative, very positive, and it's all free money and it all really happened or is happening.
Yes.
So the reason that, and the other reason I ask is you have Highway Chapter 90 at the top and no money. But we get one every year.
Right. Because it sits, so every, and every funding source is different. Sometimes they sit at the state, sometimes they come to us. Chapter 90 sits at the state until you expend it and apply for reimbursement. And so literally, it can amass for two years, three years. And we have a running account on the, we get notification of it. We get the awards from the governor's office. We know that money is there. It does not sit on our books because it's technically in the state books. When you expend it, we then have an expense, we then put in for reimbursement, then you'll have the revenue. So in the two-year span, you're absolutely. So in the two-year span, you're absolutely right. You had no revenue for two years. You didn't have an expense in '20, but you did have a sizable expense in '21. That was the River Warner Stratsen Street project.
Correct.
And then we applied for reimbursement in '22. So the money that goes along with that is coming in.
We'll see the reverse.
It's a future money for a past expense.
Yes.
So that's where I kind of, to me, if it was awarded, do we count it? Expended or not, in our bank or not, if it's awarded and available, is it ours? Did we get it? I mean, I think it's a little bit of nuance to that. And there's some accounting, there's some legal, and then there's some financial, and then there's some just, was there a letter that said you're entitled to this money when you're ready to use it? Yes, and so is that what's material? What do we consider material? I think the money is awarded and how and when the town chooses to execute it based on our plans, projects, timeline, resources, et cetera, is fluid. But potentially the work to get the award happened leading up to the award date.
Absolutely.
The work to do what the money's going to allow you to do happens after the fact. And I don't know if that's the point, I don't know what the point is. That we would want to show it as God.
If I might, I read this and I could just envision all of the questions coming with that much detail on a fluid process of money in, money out and multiple years blending together about revenues in and expenses out. And I think then you originally brought this up saying, a very simplistic form of, last year's budget was, you know, 12.9 million. I'm just throwing a number out. But we received 1.2 million in grants. Very simplistic, and it goes back to what you're just saying. What did we get awarded?
Okay.
We're going to expend it at some point. We're never going to get the grant money. I mean, I just wouldn't say never because there are some times that we don't take the grant money if we get it.
We can decline, yep.
There's, you know, it has happened. But typically, we get the grant money and we spend it. Whether it's that fiscal year, next fiscal year, whenever it happens. But it is nice to know, how much money are we taking in? In grant-awarded funds and keeping it very simplistic. What was the revenue for this fiscal year?
I agree with Scott. I come from the approach of any citizen could understand all this stuff if they wanted to take the time. But a lot of them don't want, I say not, many of them don't. They don't want to take, get into the weeds and understand all that stuff. If somebody asks a specific question, we give them a specific answer. The answer's there. Not trying to avoid anything, but just like Brian mentioned, one grant for 400,000, other for 600,000, whatever it is. Let's say, look, we've taken in a million and a half grants in the last couple of years. We're spending them in a variety of places and I'll just come to you an envelope full of money. You can get into real detail, but nobody wants to listen to all that stuff. Just real simple. Simple has a bad con, just an easy way to put it out to people.
Yeah.
They could understand if they want to, but most people, I think, don't want to.
If I, can I jump in for one more clarity? What I was going to say is I like this as a supporting document outside of there. If somebody has questions for saying, well, what does that mean? What is, you know, a total of, looks like $405,000 in FY '20 revenue that you took in? What does that, you know, what does that mean? What were those on? And you have this to say, well, the school has, you know, annual grants they get. The police have grants, you know, and then all of these other ones. And they're there. So if somebody wants to break down, here's a copy and we can discuss that. But just putting it out there for everybody to digest is just asking for a really long, complex conversation about how grant funding works and how it can span multiple years and, you know, reimbursements versus upfront. Just a lot of nuance.
Welcome to questions, but not at the annual town meeting.
Yeah.
You understand grants, we can explain them and how they work and the specifics of any one or many. But from a summary standpoint? So I'm hearing both of you talking about that and I agree. I don't know if anybody feels differently, but is that awards that we expect to take? How do you monetize that within a fiscal year? Is it all of the awards we received that year that we aren't refusing for some reason? Or we don't plan to refuse, you know? So any award letter we received in fiscal '22 or in fiscal '21, is that your summary number? My guess is what I'm asking. So like Chapter 90, I think is a good example. It's not on this list because we didn't spend it yet. But that was awarded. We get it awarded every year. It's just whether we chose to execute and use it yet. So when, in terms of a metric, when is the, what is the deciding factor to what bucket it lands in?
I guess I'm leaning towards if we have an intention to accept and utilize. Then it goes on.
And awarded.
And a letter saying you were awarded. All the nuance about how you were awarded, when you're going to get it, how you expend it, that's not irrelevant, but it's, you know, it can be convoluted. We have a letter, it was awarded. We can at least calculate that and say, we were awarded within this fiscal year.
And that might make your life harder in terms of giving a number here, even if it's less detailed.
It is less detailed, but it's going to take a little more research because it spans the entire organization, so I will have to track that down. But that's okay. I want it to be in a format that makes sense to everybody. And if this is too much information and can become more confusing, then that's not as useful.
I think the spending piece is important too. So I was going to bring up, should we also have a summary number? And it's for simplicity because it's complicated. Of saying, we also, I'll just make up a number. You know, FY '20, we received 750, you know, in grant awards that we have or plan to use.
Right.
You can quantify that a little bit in the description, that it's money that may have happened then or in the future that we plan to use. But we also spent $328,000 in that year out of grant awards, current or prior.
I'd be very surprised if people even ask or want to get into that detail. If they do, we've got it. But just the simple lump numbers, I think is good to have, in my opinion. Do what you want.
And I would also say I like that you did two years. And I think it wasn't too, too hard because it came out of the software. But if what we're asking for in a summary number is actually harder to get. I personally would be fine if we just do FY '21 because it's the last full fiscal year we have to report on.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't want to, I don't want to make a request to simplify it and then ask him to put in an extra, you know, 15 hours of research to go through line by line and find every single grant that was awarded, you know?
We can get this.
Well, and maybe I better back that up a little bit. We're planning to print and send this in a couple of days.
Right.
So maybe this isn't ready to be in this year's.
If I, can I summarize what I think I'm hearing from you all?
Sure.
So it sounds like the introductory narrative is not too far off. And instead of the detailed table, I should just summarize the table. The FY '20, FY '21 revenues and expenses are these totals. But then preceding that detail, you want just a summary chart, for instance, for FY '21, that says number of grants received. And it's the title of the grant and the total dollar amount awarded in that award letter. So FY '21's grant awards are high-level category, name, and just the totals. And then the breakdown is this much actually flowed in as revenue, this much was expended. And just be done with it and not this level.
I don't even think it was that far.
I was going to say, I really, like the title of every grant and its use, I wasn't even thinking that detail. Literally just a total dollar amount.
Okay.
You can just look at a pie chart. This is how much we took in. And this was your total operating budget. And here's a percentage of your total operating budget that we paid for out of grant.
Okay.
That's it.
And I was just going to say.
I know, it's hard to say, yeah, maybe that one. After it came out of my mouth, I realized.
The blurb is great, but I think even that is really too high-level. I like Dan's idea of keeping it very short and sweet. The town of Irving was awarded $2 million in grants. You know, here you go. It was spent. Short, sweet to the point. And I mean, it's the first year. My thing is, we'll get feedback if we do get other questions and people are saying, well, how much did it cost to spend? You know, how much did we have to put up to get those grants? Well, then we know for next year, okay, now we add this information and add that information. They say keep it short and sweet for the first year.
And Scott was kind of tailing off with a pie chart against expense for the year. But then you need to take the expenditures and stuff. And I think maybe in future years.
No, I like your stance on that one, Deb, that we start very simple this year. FY '21, this is what we were awarded for grants. You know what our overall budget was last year. However, we were also awarded this much grant money. But going forward, knowing what we're trying to build into it, it's easier to, every time we get a grant award that gets categorized, we know it's going to get added. And every time we start expending now in FY '23, '24, '25, we can build this out to show how grants really impact our budget.
My reason for asking the question is things change. We don't have the same situation we had in 1950 or something. Things change. And we have an administrator and an assistant planner and all this stuff. And yes, they don't just send you a box full of $2 million. It's difficult and complex to apply for these things. If many are competitive, you have to have somebody do that. And then after you get them, the requirements, keep track of them, are very detailed also. Or you won't get another one. So you need to have bodies in place to do that stuff. And overall, we make out like bandits. Well, I say that, we get a lot of our money back that they would have kept and spent somewhere else. They still keep more than what we get back. But we make out well because we have people doing this for us.
I think another.
Go ahead.
I was just going to piggyback on that and say, if I could add a little, if we're looking at keeping a concise narrative about the fact that we received grants, maybe just the total number of grants. So if you're calculating out, you know, I know there are 27 grant awards this year alone or 42 grants totaling $2 million. That's not, those are not real numbers. But that paints a picture, you know, to your point, it paints a picture of how much work went in to apply for and receive this many number of grants. Not just the dollar amount, because that could be one grant worth X amount of money. Or it could be 35 different grants, which entails a lot of work. And so appreciating what that level is in order to get that dollar. I think that's worthwhile.
I can make those revisions.
And I'm thinking your narrative ends up being like the first line.
Okay.
Or maybe the second, you know, first and second lines. And then it says for fiscal '21, just in text, right? The town was awarded 37 grants totaling $450,000 or whatever it is, right? And that's it.
Correct.
We don't have anything to do any graphics yet.
Okay.
We need a couple of years of data. Then you can do year-over-year, how's things trending? To your comment about portion of operating, we don't show the grants as part of the overall budget.
Yeah.
Which is actually maybe not good. Maybe something to think about.
That new financial software that we're going to have.
I know, I know, absolutely. And so not necessarily even next year, but just the idea that you just said 12.2 is our operating. That doesn't incorporate any of the grant funding that's funding something, whether that's one-time or recurring.
Correct.
And in school, a lot of it's recurring or things like that.
I was going to say, when you look at the school budget, their grants are worked in there. So they show, here's our overall budget, but here's our reduction to our budget based on grants that we receive.
When you get to that final page.
When you get to that final page, they do show their reduction in budget based on grant awarding.
Sure, sure. But we don't, we don't have a portion of the pie that is funded by grants.
We don't do that on a full-town level.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just a small piece of it within their own budget to, you know? So maybe enhancing that on our end in future years. Okay.
Anything else?
No, I would just add that I wouldn't totally get rid of the chart on Section 1-5 that we, you know, that we store it and keep it. Because it is useful.
Yep.
I mean, we like it. Other people may not, and the general public probably won't. And we'll just kind of look at it and go, oh man, this is too many numbers and too much stuff happening. I don't know what's going on, don't care to know. But at some point, we're going to have to draw from this.
Of course.
Yep.
To build. So don't throw it away.
I'd like to see it every year.
Don't ditch it, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, no, I said it's great to have on hand for that conversation when somebody does say, what's the breakdown for those 42 grants? And, you know, here it is.
What we can do is start making that part of our annual process. This actually is fueled by Debbie's end-of-the-year financial report. So the numbers are already being generated. So if pulling it into a comparison table is what's useful, that's something we can do. Absolutely.
Just one little friendly amendment to the table.
Of course.
You have bold highway, school, and police, but then, and I see that they're indented and I see that maybe just putting one more line that says, "other." You just something, if you look quick, boy, the police have a lot of grants. It's only two, but, you know.
We're going to get that fussy? Because I read this like I think most residents will.
Yeah.
And so I just skimmed over here and went right to the bottom.
Right.
I would make the grant and special revenue, the header there, a bit larger.
Okay.
Because when I looked at it real quick, I went, why are we spending so much money to get grants? And I mean, I just scrolled through quickly. Oh, okay, I get it now.
Got it, got it. Yep, all good feedback.
I would also say, I get how you did this, but maybe we break it by the same groups that we budget by.
So I agree. And because we've never asked for this, and this is probably very similar to the format that everything goes into the financial audit. So it's coming from the auditor's perspective. Yep, they don't care how we separate things.
Sure.
But if we, when we work on the new software, if we code things in a way that we are then expecting to group or report on, I think that makes perfect sense. And so when we start to think about what the charter accounts looks like and specifically how we deal with special revenue funds like this, I want to put a little more thought into how we are going to categorize those items so that we can create the pie charts and the operating analysis that we want, all of that. Absolutely. Thank you all.
And I'm going to ask one more question on it. Our word letters usually say when the money is awarded for.
Correct.
The earliest date possible.
Yes.
Should that be the year it belongs in or is it when we found out? And I only ask because we might get, we just got a grant for something, but it's not usable until fiscal '23. So is that a fiscal '23 grant? Or is it a fiscal '22? Because we got the letter in April.
My assumption was the awarding for the fiscal year that it's being utilized in.
The first available date.
First available date.
And that's what I thought, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Because we probably could build this, and I'm not even suggesting we would before we print this for this year. But we could probably build '22s. We've gotten almost every grant award already that we'll get. It's already, at this point in the year.
It's late enough.
It's so late that almost everything you've applied for, you've been awarded that you're going to get in this year. Everything left is a future award anyway.
Right.
So we might be able to have a estimated current year in the future.
Yep.
For the current, you know, for the fiscal year that just closed.
Okay.
Or will be closing. So very concise for this year.
Okay.
Narrative, that's it. Number and the narrative.
Got it.
And I would agree, the first two sentences and the narrative, just keep it simple.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you all for doing it.
An account and a total, and that's it.
Okay.
Anything else in the document or data that anyone saw or had concerns with?
Not on that document.
Brian, you added in secondary, add the note that we worked with the school and told them we wanted to, that we advised that we wanted a level fund. them we wanted to, that we advised that we wanted a level fund, and that looks fine to me. We'd come back in a system if needed to adjust.
Did that accurately reflect your agreement with them?
Yep.
I think so.
Yes.
Anything else, Brian, in there that you had questions or?
I think the only other one for the three of you was just your budget message back in the introduction. That's a lot of scrolling. Give you a moment.
Oh, that's right, you're, you talking about the one change you made? Or just the whole thing?
I don't know that the three of you had a chance to read over it the last time. It was ready for your last meeting, but I don't know if the three of you had a chance to actually say that reflects everything you meant. After your conversation about grants, you made me think I needed to add in one more line.
I don't have any concerns with it.
Makes sense. Do your other conversation.
I don't have any concern.
I don't either.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
All good on budget requests, move on to the annual summary meeting marks. So as compared to, I believe the last time we all reviewed this together, on the second, on the third page is just the links for the budget documents online that were added.
Which page are you talking about?
In the ATM. It's Roman numeral three, two, two. It's the third physical page.
Oh, okay.
I'll go through the articles quickly, just if there's any questions on any of them, we'll stop there. So Article 1, acceptance of town report. Article 2, authorization to apply for federal or state grants. Some additional wording added to broaden the scope and to make sure it was clear of any and all in legal lingo. Article 3, authorization to disclose a surplus property. Article 4, authorization to enter in compensating balance agreements. Article 5, FY '23 operating budget. That's a typo.
That's a typo.
Good catch. I'm glad I read that out loud. Make that change. And I don't have my summary sheet right next to me here, but I assume that matches the 5416567, I hope.
I'll double check that while you're looking.
Article 6, FY '23 elected official compensation. Article 7, Irving Elementary School funding. Article 8, FY '23 secondary ed funding. Article 9, Franklin County Tech School funding. Article 10 is Water Department Enterprise Fund. 11 is Wastewater Department Enterprise Fund. Article 12 is raised and appropriate for continuing annual appropriations. 13 is raised and appropriate for capital improvements. With adjusted language about where to find the detail. 14 is wastewater capital project. The article information was expanded to explain that there's some matching funds. Those things aren't happening necessarily for the funding shown. 15, borrowing authorization for the Church Street Bridge. Before the FinCom joined us, we were discussing there's some grant opportunity, there's some, I guess I would say unexpended, or there were projects from federal funding that the county oversees, correct?
Regional planning agency.
Regional planning agency with MassDOT. And some of the projects that they had funded are not going to happen in the next fiscal year, so they are looking for other shovel-ready projects to fund with that available money. So we have put the Church Street Bridge in that pool and are pushing and doing everything we can to get hopefully some, some, or maybe as much as possible from that if they, if they're able to include it.
Budget summary and Article number 5, check. And the total totaled $5,416. So you're good.
Thank you, sir. So just, we'll keep it as is for full borrowing, but as always, if we are able to get anything, we'll reduce it. 16, revolving account spending limits. 17, appropriation for capital stabilization. 18, appropriation for general stabilization. 19 is appropriation for community access television. Article 20 is acceptance of Poplin Mountain Road layout, as was presented at a recent hearing. Article 21 is semi-annual preliminary tax payment system. We discussed in one of the last meetings. We're supposed to adopt it beginning July 1st, fiscal '24. Multi-year contract authorization, this is a new Article 22, authorize signing of a five-year contract for body and cruiser camera services. This is for our police department. That is that.
I did have a question. Is this supposed to be retroactive, or is that a typo?
No, that's a typo.
Okay, because I saw July 1, 2020. And I said, I thought we were looking for 20.
I might have said 22.
Okay, all right. That was my one notation I had on that one.
It's a good one. Yep. And then zoning bylaws, Article 23, 24, 25, and that was it, right?
Correct.
And that is the end of it. So the three zoning are new?
Yep.
And they come out of work between requests and recommendations from the select board to the planning board about some changes, as well as some changes in work the planning board has already been working on with the narratives and such. So Article 23, in summary, Brian, I know you asked about ways of presenting this because it is, and even in red, it's probably even harder for us to read it, but.
It is.
Is to change or make some changes and edits to the purpose statement. And the italicized is the change.
Correct.
Or added in this case.
Yeah, they did not strike language.
Right.
We ought to do it.
So if there's any questions or anything about.
So you would send three, was it Arlington? I forget the other towns.
Amherst and maybe Wellesley?
Yeah, those are the three.
Oh, okay.
And all three of them, when I was reviewing them, they give snap, they give snippets. They look at, you know, a paragraph or two that were changed and not the full text, not the full bylaw, zoning bylaw. And I'm, I'm just throwing this out there for conversation because you would ask for, you know, feedback on it. I'm not sure which, which side I fall on. I like the brevity of, here's the, here's the change, you know, say it's a table for our, for our purposes, the table and, you know, our request to change by special permit for multi-unit, right? That's the only change in that table. And some, and there's some language change from family to unit.
Title changes.
Title changes, things like that. So grabbing those and saying, you know, paragraph this, section this, table this, those are the changes. It's a nine-page, you know, article, but we don't have to print all nine. You can, you can have a link that says if you would like the whole thing, here it is, if you want to read the whole text, and even have a couple of copies on hand if people have questions about how that relates to the entire document. But I'm not sure printing it all, because it's not, I mean, our request is to make these various changes. It's not to have a public hearing about the entire zoning.
So I'm on planning board, I'm gonna totally agree with Scott. I know what these changes are, I've worked on them for two years.
Right.
I scrolled through this whole thing, and I'm like, where's the single unit change? Where's the multi?
Right, I was doing the same thing.
I do think it's very cumbersome. And so I do think it's there, I was gonna ask that too. Is there a way where we can just capture the three changes and the three areas they affect?
I tend to agree, maybe with Scott, with all of it, but maybe with you, where I sometimes like reading the entire context of the section that's being changed.
Yeah.
Not that the context is being changed, but it may bring some color to the change being requested. But I also don't like that these are so lengthy that it is hard to find what is being changed. And that's what I don't think is clear and easy to understand for the reader who may not be a zoning expert. And I want it to be really clear what we're trying to change. So I'm wondering, kind of playing off of what you said, Scott, if we couldn't show the change, like some of these other towns, and I don't know that, I don't think we sent anything to the planning board, because Brian just came up with this and was asking. And then take the full body of that section as an appendix to the warrant, even if it's in the warrant, after the, you know, the final warrant page, it could still be part of the document, but, you know, refer to the end if you want to read the whole prior language. But here's what's changed.
Yeah. I mean, for the purpose of Article 23, you wouldn't change anything. It's 1.1, it's purpose. So there's enough changes within that one, you know, paragraph to just keep it as is. You wouldn't pull that out and say line 3, line 7, I mean, it's just the whole thing. But, you know, to Deb's point, when you get into Article 24, there's a whole list of just definitions.
That aren't changing.
That aren't changing. There's three of, three or four that are changing. You know, single family to single unit.
Single two and multi.
Yeah, single two and multi. There's three lines out of all of those definitions. It's a lot of scrolling to find three lines of italics.
And I totally understand Jake's point of having the context, but I don't necessarily think in definitions, there's context. It's a definition. So we're not going into like the marijuana bylaw, for example, we're not going into the hearts of the marijuana bylaw and changing things that would really affect the context. If we were, I would agree, I would actually want to see probably the whole thing printed out. These are literally just the definitions. So I think as long as we have the definition for single, multi, and two, we're good.
I only start chuckling because I look at the article information, and I think that could be the.
Exactly. No, I got the same thing.
That could be the motion. The article, you know, because it just says, "Approval of this article would amend the title of the following uses, single-family dwelling to now-read, single-unit." I mean, it is exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah, right. So I, I like where you're all heading with this, because I do think that's more concise and easier for the public to follow. And I, I presented it in this manner because this is how the planning board has traditionally asked us to do this. But the last time we did this was marijuana.
Yeah.
Which was a comprehensive review. And so maybe it needed to be presented in that manner. So I am happy to edit this for you all again, to make sure that it feels more concise. And that you're also sort of up against time crunch.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, I agree that if we're presenting these, it doesn't have, we don't have to come up with one policy now that says any planning or zoning change has to be done in this format. Again, if we have one that is a comprehensive overhaul, you're gonna write the entire document, and you're gonna have a conversation on it. But if we're updating one word, because MGL change, and we have to update one word or something, I don't want to print three pages of zoning, so that somebody can say, oh, you added that one word.
Okay.
And I would say for the actual table, I would just show the residential use section, because that's the only thing we're changing, or that we're proposing to change.
And there's some, I don't have it from you, there's some way to show you're excerpting a section of that zoning, and that's, that's it.
Yeah.
I completely agree with you about the definitions. I was making my statement broadly, the definitions, to me, they're, you want to go read the definitions, go read the definitions. It's not, yeah. I mean, at this point, there's no opportunity to ask the entire planning board if they'd be comfortable with whatever change we would do versus, I'll just say, prior practice last time, which is years now. At the end of the day, it's our warrant, so we present it however we feel is best. I don't think any change needs to be made to '23. I think it's fine, the purpose statement, as is. In terms of making it smaller or anything, you know what I mean, in the article.
Can I just add one more piece of context?
Sure.
Just to be clear, the planning board held their public hearing on April 14th, and I attended the vote portion of it. And so these articles represent my understanding of the votes they took about what they were recommending. My understanding is they were preparing a written report to you all about where they stood on these items. I have not received that one yet. So this is my understanding, and I've verified it with other people who've been at the meeting, that they also understood this to be the recommendations of the planning board.
I was gonna tell you, we actually voted in favor to support all of these.
I got it right.
So you can, if you would like to put our planning board support.
That's okay. Perfect.
Yes.
So I guess I'm, I'm leaning towards we take Article 25 and, I'm sorry, 24, the definitions, and just show the definitions that are changing? Because it is.
Yeah, there's three of them.
A lot of noise for.
Yep. And then 25, like Deb had mentioned, when we've been discussing these in our meetings, it has been simply just that residential use table, and leave the rest of the table out.
This goes back to something that I think, Brian, I mentioned to you in a prior memo. The residential use section, multi-unit dwelling is being shown as a new, and multifamily is a delete, and that's not accurate. It's a rename of multifamily to multi-unit, and it's a change from no to special permit in two zones.
Correct.
The other stuff is not changing. This makes it look like you're creating a whole new section, and it's, it's just a matter, we didn't edit the right thing, and we corrected this on a memo where we edited the multifamily line. In this, it looks like we're deleting the multifamily line and creating a multi-unit line.
Mariah is the one who keeps all this for us, and I know when we were, during one of our meetings, we were moving things around and shifting things, I think it's just a matter of, we had her add and then forgot to ask her to delete, so that's just never been caught, that it's, we put it in there twice by accident, basically, and just never answered it.
I think to all of these points, that multi-unit family reference shows at the bottom of the table, and there was an interest in getting it up with the single, the two, the multi, so that they read in a grouping. And so I think it was just more a housekeeping move as opposed to, but if it's creating confusion, or it's creating concern, it's probably less important that it be grouped, and more important that it's.
I see you're showing a delete from the bottom row and a, and a create in the third row.
That's what it's doing.
Which is really an edited line, just moving up in the table.
That's it. That's all it's doing.
My, the reason I bring it up, and I said this in a memo that we'd sent back to the planning board at one point, is I don't think it's necessarily clear for someone to understand that we're not adding a new section of zoning. We're modifying what's allowed in two of the four districts to change to special permit from no. That's, that's the substance change, right? As opposed to the title, so that, so that's why the presentation I don't like.
So you suggest we just model it after the two, the second line, the two-family/unit dwelling, and modify the use table and the name, all in one line?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think what Brian's pointing out is that the current zoning has multifamily as the last residential line, so bringing it up to be the third line in the table is a change.
Correct.
So I don't.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, we're getting, I think we're getting too nitpicky here. I think the easiest thing we can do is just, I would, as we did here for single, in the brackets, family unit dwelling, I would leave the multi-unit dwelling, I would just literally take those two lines, move them up, combine them into one line, show what it used to be, show what it's going to be. We, as a planning board, I can tell you right now, we have changed this chart, we have moved things, we have shifted things. I don't think we need to have that approved by bylaw, that we have moved something from number 10 to number 5. So I almost feel like it's getting way too, sorry.
It could be too transparent, it's confusing.
No, no, I agree.
I was gonna say, by law, are we required to make a notification if we, if we change the order to alphabetical as opposed to numerical, if?
I don't know.
It's not substance change.
That's what I, I was gonna ask you a question, does it really matter? Do we have to ask, or?
It's not a substance change.
There's no substance change. We're just, we're just moving.
We've done it a few times, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, not the printed regulation, this is going to be a change with the printed regulation. That's the concern.
Correct, yeah, correct. Everything to date has just been draft. So I can make that change.
I don't believe we need to.
I just move it up, put it together, and make sure we reflect old and new and call it good.
Yep. So we're gonna do, for number 25, we're gonna do an excerpt of the table focusing just on residential uses.
Yes. Yes.
And I will say, I don't think the Planning Board will have any concern with things being shortened because we do prefer things to be as accurate and concise. So I think doing it shortened is actually better, so.
Well, I think it allows us to have a conversation on the changes.
Yes.
And not the whole
Yeah, exactly.
Bylaw.
Okay. I just wanted to comment, it's not, not financial in any way. I think the Finance Committee is not voting on the zoning stuff here, recommend or not, that's not a financial thing. But presenting just the changes that you want to make, um, it's not obscuring anything. The other stuff, you already got it.
Right.
And, and if you, some, some may not like some of the stuff that's already there. Some people, they want to shuffle a whole bunch of things around. You're not, you're not here to shuffle a whole bunch of things around. These are the changes that the public hearing and the Planning Board came up with. These are the changes we're discussing, not all that other stuff that happens to be there. I think that's a wise thing to do.
Yeah.
Okay, I will make those two revisions.
Because someone's going to ask about that, drive-through restaurant in there and why is it a
And then we're going to say, well, we haven't held a public hearing on that, so we can't really discuss any changes to that. We have, there's laws that we have to follow about how we do these changes and we haven't done those for anything else other than this table.
Right. All right, so I'll make all of those changes. So I have a change in number five for the typo, a change in Article twenty-two to fix the first year. And then twenty-three stays the way it is. Twenty-four is just to focus on the three definitions with the title changes. And Article Number Twenty-five is just going to be an excerpt focused only on the residential use.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? Is, is the intent to print the, the final document in just one color?
Yes, I only put it in red just so you all knew it looked different. It will not be in red, it will be in black and white. It's hard to read, it's very hard to read.
Oh, okay. Well, I, the reason I ask is if it was going to be a multicolored document, instead of saying doc, uh, italics is, is changed and underline is deleted or whatever, you might have, you know, blue is the change and, and, you know, red is the deleted. But a single document, okay, answer my question, single color, thank you.
In the article information on twenty, the last one.
Article twenty-five?
After Village Residential Districts, you don't need to repeat, we're, we're just repeating it. It's amending the use table in the zoning bylaw to allow two-unit development by Wright and Central Village and Village Residential, comma, allow multi-unit development by special permit in Village Residential. Because those are both changes to the use table, so you don't need to say that again.
Okay.
And then I would just add to the end of that sentence, change references to family to now read unit as changed in the definitions in Article twenty-three.
So they tie together?
Just to reference back that we already made, that, that change is just the housekeeping from the article we've already approved at that point, in theory.
Right.
Got it.
Okay.
All good with the annual town meeting warrant?
As amended.
The Finance Committee has not made any recommendations?
No.
Are you making recommendations on all articles, some articles, and if so, which ones?
I think our
Yeah, I think we'd asked previously if we're going to vote piecemeals, we went along and the committee, I think they said voted outside.
I posed the question because you mentioned that you may, Finance Committee may or may not be voting on the zoning articles. So if there are articles within that you're not recommending or taking no position on, then I would just ask if we can be clear about what's, what belongs in which bucket.
I'd rule that we recommend all the articles other than the zoning, unless the board wants to make some recommendation. I don't think they have
No, I'm in. I'll second that.
Motion made by Dan, seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And should we assume no rec, makes no recommendation on zoning? Is the, or just we can remove it completely?
I was going to, that was my thing is rather than leaving it there and then says makes no recommendation, just deleting Finance Committee recommends, it's not even an option because it's not part of your motion that you are or are not.
That's good.
So it's up through Article twenty
Twenty-three through twenty-five?
I mean, yeah, twenty-three through twenty-five are, are omitted. Everything else has a financial piece.
Go ahead, delete the FinCom, we're good with that.
Well, that way none of the questions are going to FinCom, you know, at that time.
I mean, there, there may come up something with zoning where some other Finance Committee thinks it has something to do with financial interests of the town. I don't happen to think they do, but
It may at some point, but maybe not these. Okay, uh, any other business the Finance Committee has for us?
I don't believe so.
Wednesday, May eleventh, seven PM. We, we're meeting prior, I know that's what he's going to ask.
We typically do.
We typically do.
Just in case.
The board will usually meet at six.
Yep.
Six thirty for us?
We usually head in by six thirty or try to, to, uh, get, get things in order. Do you want us just to let you know if we know of any changes or amendments that need to be made? And if so, then we'll have it as joint and you can join us at six to talk about it if you want? Or do you want to just plan to, or what would you like to do?
Should we just plan for it and we can cancel if need be?
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever you plan.
We plan to see you at six on Wednesday night. And if we don't have anything, we'll let you know, or if we decide we're not going to hold it, we'll let you know.
Right.
Either way, we'll see you Wednesday, May eleventh.
Yeah.
With that, um, anything else the board had?
Nope.
Brian, are you planning to edit that tonight for us to sign before we leave? Or you want us to come and sign it tomorrow?
I can have it all ready for you to sign first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay. I just know you have a short timeline, so I want to make sure we're giving you enough time.
Yeah, if I can get it posted by Constable tomorrow, Wednesday, I can start running off all the printing and we can hopefully have it in the mail by Friday at the latest.
Okay. That'll make a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee and the Board of, and the Select Board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you. Brian, if, if you need, if you need for me to post that, could you let me know?
Yes, sir.
And I may, I may do some other things, but see who's around.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Time frame for getting that signed tomorrow, is there a deadline?
Nope, um, as long as I can
Before six PM, right, or whatever?
I mean, for the annual, you only need seven days.
Oh, okay.
Because you all have a habit of mailing it out a month in advance, so residents have time with it. I'm behind that schedule.
Okay.
Not your legal schedule, so we have plenty of time, but I'd like to maximize the time you have.
I have a busy day, so I probably won't get out there until five PM or so to sign it.
No worries.
So if you have it signed by tomorrow night, that gets you everything you need to do for getting it out?
And then I can work with the Constable and then we can go from there.
On Wednesday, you'll be able to get everything going, okay.
Okay.
In our office?
We have a little
Our office, is that where it's going to be?
It'll be in your office. I, yeah, I think so, it's going to be in our office.
Yep.
Okay. Brian, would you give me a call anyway, something else?
Yes, sir.
Otis will talk about, thank you.
Yes, sir.